All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, here in the boardroom. We have a roll call, please, Tammy.
Jaclyn Grumler.
Here.
Nubs Ashbeck.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Lynda Yingling.
Here.
Paul Crew. Chad Krieger. Kendra Asna.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Thank you, Tammy. You join me face to flag. Just like what? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a form of management. Professional conduct is the expectation for all attendees. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda, our first thing is our public comment to the board. I do not have any sheets turned in, so we'll move right on with board recognition. During this point on our agenda, we, tonight, we, the board would like to recognize John Hagermeister for being part of a three-person panel on September 28th at Harvard Kennedy School in Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Tammy's going to sneak over and grab a picture. You've got Max in here. Take a moment to share that experience with us. That'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I'll sit down. This is a good start. So last May, I was driving to Madison to go to the first ever in-person BBA choir concert. First time the kids ever got together. They did all their rehearsals online, so it was kind of a cool thing. And I get this email from a guy from the University of Oklahoma asking if I want to be a part of a panel at Harvard. So I'm like, delete, you know, this is some kind of sales pitch or whatever. And then I read it, and I'm like, this, this actually might be legitimate. So then I sent it to Shannon. About this? He's like, it looks like a great opportunity, which means he probably didn't read it. And I'm like, oh, okay. So, so then I sat down with Jamie, our assistant director, and I looked at it. I'm like, do you think this is legit? And she said, I don't know what she said, but the back, she said, from the back. The guy said, yeah, we want you to come there. We researched a bunch of virtual, or online schools throughout the country, and yours is very successful, so we want to hear more about it. I said, okay. Well, then fast forward into June, I didn't hear anything back, and then I had some health issues, so I sort of dropped everything for a while. And then I came back in, and I got another email, like in July, from this guy saying, do you want to do this or not? I said, sure. So I reached back out to him again, and gave him some info, and, um... So it was basically what they, what it is. It's a conference on emerging school models. So virtual education, homeschooling, there's microschools, there's a whole thing on AI. But this is the second year that they've done this, where they bring all these people together to listen to presentations about different schooling options, and then they talk about it, because that's what they do at Harvard. So it was just this strange mix of school practitioners, government, you know, policymakers, salespeople. I mean, it was, it was just kind of an eclectic bunch. Not everybody there was a supporter of anything other than the traditional brick-and-mortar, which made it really interesting, because there's some good discussion that we had. Um, but for our part, I got to talk about how great the Merrill Schools has been to support what we do, and just why I felt like our, our model's successful. Um, and I'm trying to clearly state that just because we're successful at what we do, that doesn't mean it's for everybody, because it's not. But I think what we do, we do quite well. Um, so it, you know, not something that I expect to ever have happen again, but it was, it was fun. And I'm glad, you know, we were able to share the experience of the district, because it's not just BBA, it's the whole district. And, um, so if you have, you know, an hour of your life you want to spend watching, it was kind of a fun, uh, the two people that were with me on the panel were not practitioners per se, one of whom was a researcher, and another guy who runs an organization called, um, the Digital Learning Alliance or something like that. But he's, he, they're both kind of nationwide school people. And so, um, just being on that has led to like all these people reaching out to us now and, hey, can you tell us more about your school? And I'm like, well, I don't know how it works in Mississippi, but here's how it works in Wisconsin. And, um, but it's, it's kind of been a motivator for the staff, too, because they feel pretty good about, you know, just being recognized. And I hope you guys feel good about it, too, because it's, it's really pretty cool. So, so that's what it was.
I shared the visit, the video with the board. If you haven't had a chance to watch it yet, it's very interesting, because the John's part, especially the first half of your part, is kind of like a nice little history recap of how BBA really got to where it is today, because it did have a very humble, rocky start, if I could view it.
Yeah, yeah, rocky. I thought you said that. If you know we're here, then you know that.
So I thought it was a great panel. I thought the video was great. I did watch it. I did read your email.
You did? Yeah. No, it was, it was good. And it was kind of funny, because they told me I had 15 minutes to share my history or share the story, and then, uh, we were going to have questions from the people who were, uh, running the conference, and then we would have open questions from the people in the audience. And, um, you know, I could talk for hours about BBA. You know, it's like, people were asking me, how are you preparing? Like, 12 years of doing this is pretty much how I prepared for it. So I'm going, yeah, I, I was somewhere in the story, and all of a sudden I see someone back there one minute. All right, let me wrap this up. And so I tried to be concise with why I thought it was successful, but, um, it, it was, it was a good experience, and, you know, I'm really proud of what the partnership that we've had has done. And I know some of you were on the board when we started. And one of the things that I remember sharing with, uh, with the board, sharing with DPI, because we had a lot of interaction with them, was like, hey, just let this thing go for a little bit. I think it's going to be good. I think it's going to work. And so now, looking back at that, I'm like, it worked. You know, but anyway, so thank you for this. This will go in our wall of fame.
Let's thank you again. What a great honor. Really appreciate John representing the district in BBA. That was phenomenal. And while that's a hard act to follow, we do have Max Black here as our student board rep. So if someone has to do it, might as well be Max tonight. Tell us a little bit about what's going on at the, uh, school activities at the high school.
Yeah. So on the 20th, Blue Jake Football took home a 28-26 win against the Lumberjacks for a perfect finish to the season. Volleyball finished strong as well, making it all the way to the regional semifinal level on the 19th. Both teams did a great job representing our school, and the seniors should be proud of their performance. On Friday, November 10th, the high school will be celebrating Veterans Day. There will be two ceremonies to commemorate this day. Mr. Potter, with help from other staff, usually organizes and performs these ceremonies. But this year, he has a goal to get students more involved. The National Honor Society is helping to organize and plan. The band will perform patriotic pieces, and senior Eric Mann has taken a role as AMC. We're lucky and happy to have Iraq veteran David Mathias as our keynote speaker, who's been portrayed in the National Geographic mini-series Long Road Home. This month, a small group called the Attendance Matters Committee, or the AMC, was created and had its first meeting. The group is made up of community members who hold or have held positions in private sector or government roles that are believed to have a perspective that will help chosen children avoid truancy. Staff such as Mrs. Kubicek and Mr. Potter facilitate this process and schedule the students' time with the committee. The committee has authority to recommend actions that students and staff should take to improve attendance. For roughly two months now, our daily schedule has been different from last year due to an adjustment in staff. Fourth period is now a time for clubs to meet and for students to get extra help. For me, since fourth period is back-to-back with lunch, I have a sizable chunk of time to leave campus and eat lunch, as long as I haven't been requested by a teacher. Ninth and 10th graders aren't allowed to open campus and have an intervention time, where they can work on homework, meet with teachers, to have lessons re-taught, and just build stronger relationships with the staff.
Wonderful. Thanks for the update, Max. Any board members have any questions or follow-up?
I don't have a question or a follow-up, but in Veterans Program, uh, November is going to be Color Veterans Month. So, and if you want to honor them, uh, put a green light bulb outside your house or somewhere inside where people can see. So if you want to support the Veterans, uh, put a green light bulb.
Excellent. Any other board members have any follow-up for Max? I think that was a great update. Appreciate your time once again this evening. Moving on, our, our agenda next is the administrative reports. Board members who had any questions, certainly could have emailed the directors or administrators before this, otherwise they can ask questions during the meeting, so it's on the record. This time, I'll turn over the section to Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Uh, the first, uh, report tonight is the summer school report. Amanda Patterson's here. She shared that at CTP the other evening, uh, talking about, um, participation numbers and those kind of things. And I'm just Patterson's here. Next up is the annual exit survey data review for 2022-23, staff exit, that is. And Kelly Strike shared that with HR Finance, and she's here to answer questions. The, uh, monthly food service report for the month of September is attached from Laura Cloudsy, including participation. Any questions during September? Out of no disrespect to my artistry... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't have a, uh, other question. I have just, uh, curiosity. What does an average student in an high school spend for lunch?
Uh, what is 280?
You want me to look at my own?
Okay.
Yeah, so there, there's the standard lunch. I think it's 260 or 280. And then, um, there's à la carte items, and that's where sometimes the kids tend to add up, yeah.
I guess why, the reason I'm asking that, because I saw something on Facebook where somebody paid for a student's lunch that was later behind. You know, and I think we could get more of that if we advertised it. I think, I think there's a lot of people don't know that you can pay some students lunch that's behind them. And if there was a way we could, uh, get it, like in a photo booth or something, you know, if you want to do something nice for Christmas or Thanksgiving, uh, pay a student's back lunch or something. It's just...
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could put that as an agenda item. There's, uh, a reasonable explanation why that's challenging. Mostly like donated $100 food accounts or, you know, biggest account banners or the oldest, or, you know... There's, there's a lot of layers to that, so maybe we'll just kind of introduce that as a topic.
And I understand all that, just saying that there's kind of a way that, that we could advertise it.
Thank you. Uh, next up was the Pine River School for Young Learners, uh, monthly report, including enrollment numbers, uh, some documentation from the head start office, et cetera. Ryan is here to answer any questions. The third Friday enrollment, uh, report is presented by Ms. Luska. It's the data from, uh, this, this fall. The Director of Business Services report, final budget adjustments, lower revenue ceiling changes, by staff, et cetera. Kelly, of course, is here to answer any questions she might have on that. Next up is the Director of Buildings and Grounds, transportation update. Uh, Dale is not here this evening, but his report has a couple of different things in there, capital, COVID, safety, etc., et cetera, et cetera. If there are any questions, we can attempt to answer those or afford those on to Dale. Item H is district goals for 23-24. We've kind of shared this in different formats, um, over the last several weeks. We essentially have two goals, an academic goal and a mental health or SEL goal. And, um, as you're all aware, we have our literacy, um, together initiative in the school, in the school district, with the, with the purpose of improving literacy scores. And that academic goal, as stated there, is during the 23-24 school year, all students will be to exceed expected growth of literacy using our assessment tools. In addition, students with disabilities will meet their aggressive growth goals. Those are defined through those assessments. So it's a, it's a measure. Uh, they did their pre-assessments in fall. There's an expected growth goal by spring. So that's what, uh, that's focused on. And then the, the SEL goal, which is a little bit further down on page two, June 24th, as a district-wide average, 62% of students will consistently apply practices of we are, of the we are connected mindset from data collected by a poll survey. Same thing. We did a pre-survey at all grade levels to determine, uh, how students felt in the area of we are connected as one of the seven mindsets, um, principles. And so we have some baseline data, and that, that baseline pre-assessment data is at the bottom of that. 60, about 65% of the elementary grade students responded yesterday are applying the we are connected mindset. That's quite a bit lower than the secondary levels, uh, 30%. So, um, we took those averages, put a stretch goal to it, and we came up with a 65%, or 62%, I'm sorry. So those are our two, our two focus areas this year. They have links in there to our 100-day plan. You've seen that before, where that's always in the forefront, and we are, when I say about the 100-day plan, is it's very short, it's focused, it's, uh, the responsibilities are delegated, and, um, we are doing what we said we were going to do, is the best way to say it, and being accountable to each other. So any questions on the school goals for the year? And then, uh, finally, it was the superintendent's report. It's just kind of some housekeeping things in there. More than anything, tomorrow, we have our MSI day, um, which is a building-level day primarily. We are getting together as a whole staff at 11:30 in the high school auditorium for some celebrations and a check-in on our goals that I just shared with you. And, um, then after that, we have lunch in, uh, in the commons. Um, it's a tailgate-themed part. Uh, lunch, so people are encouraged to wear jerseys, et cetera. We have some of our board members that are leaving on for us, and so I appreciate the folks that are helping out with that. I think our staff always appreciates that as well. The survey, I think there's a copy, maybe? Is there? Um, that survey goes out, uh, this week, and so we're looking forward to seeing, um, results back from that. Somewhere, I think it closes on the 28th, and then we can kind of make some decisions moving forward on how we want to proceed with facilities. On the 7th, we're hosting a, November 7th, we're hosting a Jefferson Community Latin Listening Session on the survey, uh, before we did some of the changes to the revenue ceiling that's gone down after all, and the impact that has had on us, not even operations reference, uh, this, this people. Uh, so we'll start advertising that, and it's going to actually publicize on Facebook and some other things over the show. So, uh, that, every, every board member, of course, is welcome to join us for that. And then, uh, on the 14th, we go down, uh, to participate in our second Sale Academy Session. That's where we review our, uh, the conclusion of our first 100-day plan as administrative and start developing our second 100-day plan, which I'm looking forward to. Any questions on that report? Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Next on our agenda this evening is our committee reports. First update we have is from the Policy Committee, a lot of work they did there on October 2nd. Draft minutes are attached. Committee members are present. If you have any board members have questions for our Policy Committee, if you have any questions for Policy Committee. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Human Resources Committee. Attached were the draft minutes from the October 11th meeting. Ron Liberty as chair is available, and other members of the Finance Human Resources Committee. Any board members have questions for the Finance HR Committee? Hearing none, we'll have the same opportunity with the CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee. Attached were the draft minutes from the October 11th committee meeting. The members of that committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for our CTP Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next on our agenda is unfinished business. We do not have anything under that heading, so we'll move right into Board of Education business. The first item there is the adoption of the 2023-2024 budget and levy certification. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Dr. Kelly Strike. The recommended motion. Anyone? Ron?
Motion to approve the 2023-2024 budget as presented, and to set the property tax levy at $9,463,617 for Fund 10, and $350,000 for Fund 80, for a total levy of $9,813,617.
We have a motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
A second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Kelly, is there any things you'd like to highlight on that? This is certainly a thorough topic summary, and you've gone through, say, committee and things, but anything you'd like to highlight before the vote?
Um, I guess a couple of things. Um, I just, I think everyone at committee heard, but that was, um, we obviously had to change since the annual meeting with additional revenue that we weren't anticipating. So I guess just to highlight that the process, that our alt team began an exercise in July and August to assist with final Esther planning and kind of thinking of that operational need moving forward. Um, once we heard of the new revenue, we gave an opportunity for all staff to give input via survey about needs they may have in their classrooms and across the building. Uh, and then our alt team and Dale have done a lot of work in terms of walkthroughs. And so we have, um, put together a list of what that additional revenue and budget expense that you can see, and some highlights in there, um, that include, um, some limited staffing, and we have to keep in mind that enrollment is, um, decreasing, but some additional staffing, including an additional, um, aid at hate, some behavior support at middle school, and you'll probably hear about that more next month, um, bringing back, um, some part-time custodial help and suck custodians, um, and looking for a social worker, ideally so that we have one in each building. Um, right now, our elementary buildings are sharing a social worker. Um, and we've identified a lot of, around furniture, some instructional supplies, and building improvements. So that's largely where the additional funds have gone. Um, the other thing, um, that has changed since there, I just want to highlight, is the mental health aid. We got a D-18 grant, and we refine a lot of our grants that, absent a couple of directors over the summer, we will, we continue to refine those. Um, you will see that since even my projection, a little bit of an increase in mill rate and total tax, that's largely aid was a little bit, um, less than, um, I had projected, and we don't know that until October 15th. The other thing is credit school vouchers. I just want to make it clear that that is not, um, revenue that's coming from the district. We're kind of almost a pastor. We have to levy for that, and that goes back to credit school vouchers. Um, that we don't know until October 15th as well, and that was a little bit higher than I anticipated. We went from 780,000, it was estimating about 950,000. We're now up quarter 1.2 million or so. Um, the mill rate you can see at the end of that was 580,000. I think there's more details in there, but that's something to go highlighting.
Any questions for Kelly? Please.
I just want to recognize Kelly, this has been her life's work since a long time, and especially with the revenue ceiling change that was dropped on her, which is a good thing to have dropped on her, I would say. Uh, but that was, um, a pleasant surprise, but still a surprise. It required a lot of thinking, a lot of action on our part, and I think the process that we came up with, that gig staff input for, for the main need for some revenue, uh, was, was very engaging, and I think people agreed, felt really good about that process. And so, congratulations on that balance, that budget balance. And I'll throw a couple of Skyward glitches along the way that added some stress to your life, but that we made it.
Yep.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Kelly. Now that we have the additional highlights and that, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is revision of the evidence-based COVID-19 mitigation policy. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich. Anyone have a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the revised Head Start evidence-based COVID-19 mitigation policy.
Motion by Jaclyn. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening for board members? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is the approval of the Head Start Annual Report. That annual report was compiled by Ryan Martinovich. Anyone have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the Head Start Annual Report as presented to the board.
A motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Head Start Training for the Board of Education. As you're aware, the Board of Education is the governing body of the Head Start program, and us, as board members, must receive training specific to our roles as governing body members, and we need to be able to articulate how the training has helped us make the decisions about the Head Start program. So we do get some additional training along the way through additional topic summaries on Board of Education reports or special agenda items. We did have attached in our packet a training presentation and the governance training agreement. Mr. Martinovich is available for any questions if you have not reached out directly already. When you do, uh, complete that, please, uh, fill out the form and return to Tammy by the beginning of November. You could add a November 10th must-do date on there, please. Any questions on that process? This is informational only, but important piece of board work. Hearing nothing, we will move on to our pre-calculus and technical math textbook adoption and purchase from Merrill High School. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Amanda Patterson. This has been discussed at both the Finance Human Resources and CTP committees with a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Ron?
I need a motion to approve the purchase orders for high school textbooks from the Sova Learning Company and withdraw purchase from the ESSER funds.
We have a motion by Ron. Do we have a second? A second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
I'm not sure, Ron. Here we go.
By the end of September, zero. I mean, by the end of next September, we have it all accounted for.
Oh, okay.
So unless somehow you get a, a discount on something that was, needs to be adjusted, Kelly and the team are looking at that closely, making sure we're utilizing all of that. Any additional questions on the motion or the topic? Go ahead.
Just, Nubs, to really address your question, you will be approving stuff with ESSER funds for quite a while yet, but it's all, it's all spoken for. A lot of curriculum, a lot of resources, so you'll see these come through.
Thank you, Shannon. Any additional discussion or questions for this motion or agenda item, topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a technical correction that's being made to Policy 7440, the Facility Security bylaw. the Facility Security for Bylaw 0131.3. The superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through our normal rulemaking procedures. This is the way that it is brought to our attention. Consider all of us made aware of those technical corrections to policy 7440. Next, we will start in on a number of Neola Volume 32 policy updates and first readings. First one that I'm seeing, and I believe we need Tammy to go through these individually, correct?
One half, you put them all in line if you want to.
So let me ask this. Does anyone want to articulate or discuss any particular policy in that section as a first reading prior to our line on the, within Section G of our board business? I can go through them. That would be policy 7310, which is personal property 0164 for meetings, 5505 academic honesty, 6236 community services fund, 7250.01 memorials for staff and students, policy 7440.02 smart monitoring equipment, 7540.08 artificial intelligence, policy 8121 personal background check for contracted services, policy 8700 mercy mothers, policy 8913 Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. That's a, a renumbered policy or new. Anyone have any discussion they want to go through, or is someone willing to make a motion to go through them as first readings in the group I just listed? Ron?
Do you mark them red individually, red individually, or just item H?
Red and G.
Or G? G.
Because Kevin read them all, but I can just click that and that's what you're doing.
Make a motion to approve all the policies in item G as a first reading.
A motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. I would ask if we do have any discussion or questions on that entire motion or anything as a part of that. Please note that as stated, that is as a first reading, so that will come up again. Second reading consent agenda next month if passed. Any discussion or questions either on the process or that particular motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our personnel report, the hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements. The personnel report is put together by Dr. Kelly Strike and her team. There is a recommended motion. If someone's willing to make a motion this evening. Nubs?
I look to approve the bad personnel report from Dr. Kelly Strike regarding hires/transfers, vacancies, and leaves, and by satisfaction, the appropriate liquid damage for resignations without the.
Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any discussion, questions on this motion, topic, report? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is in fact the consent agenda. I would ask that this time if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda to be handled on its own. Jaclyn?
Policy 5530.
5530?
Student possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia.
Okay, you will pull that and then start a discussion on that, correct Tammy? I will turn the floor over for yourself, Jaclyn, to explain what you would like to discuss or how to handle this particular policy, please.
Sure. So I'm actually on policy, and we had a discussion briefly on this as we were making the selections for revisions to this policy. Under item G, the selection for essential oils and oil-like products that may be mistaken for a drug. I just kind of have questions. I myself use oils personally or with my children and know others. And I know at the meeting when we kind of discussed like what would happen if somebody was using that like for a remedy for a headache or digestion or whatever it could be at that point, really be something that would be kind of enforced, or a child might really get in trouble for it. But the more I thought about it after the meeting, the more I felt like it just doesn't fit with like the heading of this policy. And so like if a student was and was in violation, like it would, I just don't know that it goes under like intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. I feel like it should just be handled under another policy if that's a thing. So I don't know that I would select option G to include that.
Nothing. Anything, Ed or Ron, anything to add from a perspective of you would?
Yeah, I thought we were going to check.
Well, I don't, I feel like with my memories, it got checked, but I don't know that after thinking about it more and like practical use, that I would. Either way, it's still checked on in here as it happens. Yeah, so.
Are you all right with it not being checked as being mentioned by?
Yes, because it's not touched, who was talking was not checking.
Good.
Can I ask Tricia, I don't want to put you on the spot, Tricia, is this a thing, are you seeing oils?
A little bit of oils, but it's not, they're in like an original essential oil bottle. There are a few students that do use it.
Are you seeing anything that would be a concern under this policy as a toxicant?
No, I, I don't.
Then follow up with, if we had some THC oil or something that was tested, it would still fall into this policy regardless of that box was checked. So because it's what's in that oil, once it's tested, if that makes sense? So I'm comfortable with genuine not being checked.
Okay, just a comment to that too. If it's specific for THC oil, then I would recommend Neola to put it. That it's specific to those types of things, but yeah, I agree with Jaclyn to have.
Linda, go ahead.
Just, I mean, since there's still discussion on that right now, do you send it back to the policy committee and have them reback that, or maybe put that essential oils or something else under a different policy number, or create a whole new policy for something like that? I don't, I don't know. We just don't check it because if Neola has it, they support us and back us from liability standpoint, right? So we just don't check it and not accept that box, right?
Or doesn't have to go back to Neola? Because sometimes if we did some unchecked or something, then they have to go back and redo something, sir?
No, that's, that's an option.
Okay.
It's our decision whether we want to check it or not.
On the statute of law.
We always still, we always still do the checking.
Is it, is it a thing, Tricia?
I'm just confirmed with Megan, like it was this dab oil, but anything that we would think would be suspicious, we would test, right? And then that would kind of be the deciding factor. If it was an essential oil, essential oil, was this THC dab oil, whatever it's called?
If it was a THC dab, it would be covered under B, which is checked.
Okay, other words, my other thought is, I feel like, because I, I understand what you're saying. I guess I think of essential oils as like true essential, like a peppermint oil for a headache or something for digestion, whatever. Put lavender on an Oui or something. But like, I think what you're saying is something different. So like if you have suspicions for other oils that aren't categorically like a THC or something like that, you, maybe you could just eliminate essential oil and just say oil-like products mistaken for drugs? But if you're not discovering that you're like, oh, we need an option to be able to like, ask a student about something, then I would just eliminate it altogether, just because it's confusing.
I, I don't think, I mean, I don't know where the stand is on essential oils. Back when essential oils started, it was a huge buzz around the state and in legal sessions. I remember attending things, but essential oils are more normalized now. I, I just think the spirit of this policy is probably just these oil-like substances that are like in letter B that they're worried about.
Okay, then I would stand with my suggestion.
Right. Could you put that, after a little group discussion, could you put that in a form of a motion?
Sure. Can I just make the revision? Like I would recommend a motion to revise policy 5530, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia, to redact option G, essential oils and oil-like products that may be mistaken for a drug.
A second. Motion by Jaclyn. We have a second by Ron. Any additional clarifying questions or discussion? Additional clarifying questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Any additional items that anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda to be handled individually? Otherwise, I would look for someone to make a motion, keeping in mind that policy 5530 is in there, so we would not read that line, if someone is willing to make that motion. Ron?
I have a motion to approve consent for agenda item 83D, which includes minutes of the September 27, 2023, October 9, 2023 meetings, and a second reading approval of the following policies. 7544 use of social media, bylaw 0142.1 microaccesses, bylaw 0143.1 public expression of board members, bylaw 0144.3 conflict of interest, policies 3121 slash 4121, criminal history, record check, and employee self-importing requirements, policy 2340 district sponsored trips, policy 2451 program and curriculum modifications, policy 2521 selection of instructional materials and equipment, policy 5113 open enrollment program, parentheses, inter-district, policy 5200 attendance, policy 5517 student anti-harassment, policy 6151 return slash outstanding state checks, policy 6610 non-district supported student activity accounts, policy 7440.01 video surveillance and electronic monitoring, policy 8146 notification of education options, policy 8420 school safety, policy 8500 food services, and policy 8531 free and reduced price meals. The deletion of the following policies. Policy 0164.1 regular meetings, policy 0164.2 special meetings, policy 0165.1 notice of meetings, policy 0165.2 change of regular meetings, policy 6123, policy 3123, policy 4123, sections 405 slash 88 prohibition against dis- disability discrimination in employment, and policy 5250 program or curriculum modifications, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaled $3,299,826.23, and donations totaled $4,310.
We have a motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I stand from the October 9th meeting minutes.
All right.
I'll stand from the 27th and October 9th meeting minutes.
All right. Motion carries with the abstentions as noted, Tammy. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. The purpose of this agenda item is just to identify any topics to be visited or revisited at an upcoming meeting, be it a committee meeting or board of the whole. We do attach a running list of requested items that we're continuing to monitor through other processes, such as our facilities study and survey, et cetera, with the future Jefferson School, and also coming up with additional information or ways to inform our community, how the board operates through committees and board meetings, et cetera. With that said, does any board member have any items for future meetings that they would like to make a note of right now? Any additional items for future meetings? Otherwise, feel free to contact Mr. Murray or myself, or any of the chairs of the committees, so we can make sure we have those on there in a timely manner. So if you can do that a week or 10 days prior, would be appreciated. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a reminder of tomorrow morning's radio schedule. Approximately 8:15 a.m. on Blue Jay 730 radio. Mr. Murray and I will go through tonight's agenda and anything's happening in the district. Future meetings, the Safety Committee meeting will be held on Monday, October 30th at 12:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Facilities Committee next meets on Wednesday, November 1st at 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. School Forest Advisory Meeting is Monday, November 6th, 4 p.m. at the School Forest. The Head Start Policy Council meets Tuesday, November 7th, 5:30 p.m. in River School for Young Learners. There's a community listening session on November 7th at 6 p.m. at Jefferson School. CTP or Curriculum Technology Group of Services Committee meets next on Wednesday, November 8th, 4:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Finance Human Resources Committee meeting will be Wednesday, November 8th, starting no sooner than 5 p.m. following CTP here in the boardroom. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, November 15th, 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom.
I just remind the board that for the meetings on November 8th, CTP and HR Finance, those agendas will be coming out first on the morning of the 6th, ten days of vacation. So I'm pushing that deadline, so it'll be pretty short.
Jaclyn?
Is there not normally a board member on the Safety Committee?
The Safety Committee is during the day, and it is a subcommittee of the facilities. So we do get a report as an agenda item at the Facilities Committee. It's one of the first items there, and it's usually just a couple of days immediately in front of facilities. Like you see, it's the Monday right before that, Wednesday. So no, we have, we have not had, and I can remember, membership on that since it was during the day.
You are certainly welcome to.
I just wonder, because when I look through the rule of statement, it's like, well, I don't ever see a board member, and then like I don't get the invite on like the Google Calendar. So I just didn't know, I didn't know it was, if it was just an administration thing or board member. Is assigned or goals ever?
It is a subcommittee of facilities that did not have an assigned portion of the board member. It is a subcommittee of facilities that did not have an assigned portion for the board member.
Kendra was telling Shannon over the meeting, I recently watched on the movie that is about like school safety and it was cinematic, albeit, but also interesting and I'm like, hmm, what's this? Here you have just heard.
Kevin, I do have a question, I'm sorry. Um, for the unfinished business for future meetings, um, a while back, and I don't know where it fell, but I requested, uh, information on virtual meetings, um, for board members that aren't able to attend due to other reasonings, but I don't think that's ever gotten added to that list that I can see. Um, or what the outcome of that was, or if it was talked about and it wasn't at a meeting and I got tabled or what. But, um, I don't see that on the running item question or anything as to that.
I didn't think we had a discussion on it, but I'll have to, my memory's not spot on either, so I'd want to get the, the minutes and review that. I, I don't recall, so I would go through that with Tammy and Shannon or Kendra.
I'm pretty sure we had a discussion on that two months ago, two months ago.
No, I, I remember your discussion. I thought the board had a discussion either at the committee level.
The board, but I don't know what the outcomes of that one was. We're supposed to check on pricing and things like that, I believe, right?
So my memory, we talked about it as a board and then I know it was discussed at CTP and I think we tabled it as, that we weren't going to offer virtual, given like the time, the cost, the.
And what would the cost be? Because I don't know, what was the cost during COVID when we did virtual?
So the cost.
We already have somebody here.
Uh, somebody here is very different than making sure that everything is working on the TVs and the remote link. So we did share the cost, it wasn't huge.
Yeah, I took off my notes. Well, that's okay, I just started because I didn't see it ever come back through and I didn't see it on the running list that I mentioned.
And I think there was part of it too, like from a perspective of like, if you're not feeling well or you, or something's going on and we, like, don't worry about this, like take care of yourself and this isn't like a concern. So there was kind of like a piece of like, the conversation, the dialogue around it was like to just help and have us be in person and we, and then also the, uh, the result of some of those means were less than productive because it was hard to get people logged in and whatnot. So it was, at the end of the day, it was consensus that we just didn't test. And closed session was another conversation that was hard to just make sure that it was truly closed, so.
So much now because I haven't heard anything about it and, I mean, you truly can't be here, you can't be here, here like physically. But if you got COVID or something and you have to stay home, you don't mind this in a part of the meeting? I still think there should be an option, but I'll leave it at that. Thanks. That's all.
All right. Shannon, do you want to go through that real quick?
Yeah, I just mentioned, I should have mentioned this earlier. Doing recognitions or other things, um, that last Friday, the city of Maryland conjunction or kind of mirroring the efforts of the state of Wisconsin, declared, um, Friday, October twentieth, as Community, Community Media Day in the city of Maryland a hundred. Our ongoing partnership with Media Productions, MP three, Karen Spitzik was there, Nathan Meyer was there to, to receive this proclamation when they are declaring that day, Community Media Day.
Thank you, Shannon. All right. That concludes our open session. So at this time, I have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive co-session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen-point-eight-five, front one, front C. Considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility, plan E deliberating or negotiation of purchase of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a close session, or N F considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations, specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where R N B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involves such problems or investigations. R N G conferring with legal counsel for the government mental body who is offering or rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And one eighteen-point-one-two-five for the purpose of considering student early college credit and Start Now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that are discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputations of the persons discussed. Purpose of the close session is for the consideration of and possible action regarding applicants for participation in the early college credit and Start College Now programs and to discuss the superintendent's regularly scheduled formative evaluation. Do we have that motion this evening?
Some.
A motion by Linda, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ron. Tammy, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Jaclyn Gremler.
Hi.
Nubs Ashbeck.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Kendra Austin.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kevin Lake.
Aye.